Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
All right, call the meeting board. Carla, are you ready?
I am. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
Another year. Just like a good hole for me. I'm blessed with that. Here's coffee for Nick's daughter. Okay. I think we have good news.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that's exciting.
Compared to last year, maybe it's much better. Right under the cover page, it will start with the workers' compensation. Renewal is January 1, 2024, with the I-PAS Work Comp program. Our estimated payroll that we used around this, $1,272,000. We used the 2022 audited payroll, and after talking to Brandy, typically we increase it 5%. But we went 10% because of salary increases. So as you're aware, the payroll gets audited at the end of the policy year. So you get charged for more payroll than we estimate, or you get a re-credit if it's left. So we did increase it 10%. Our experience modification factor for three years did drop from a 2.35 to a 2.02, which is going in the right direction. Obviously, our hope is that we can get to a 1.00. So we're still paying double the standard rates for workers' comp, but at least it's dropped. And the claims that came off was 2019, where we had paid claims, and I'll round these figures, 244,000. And in 2022, and you can see there, our total claims was 111,484. Hopefully, we can have a repeat of 2020 at zero claims. But I can tell you, this year has been favorable. We're going to go another month with only $475 in paid claims. So next year, we will lose the 2020 claim, which is zero, and we'll gain 475, which was as of November 19. Last year's estimated premium was $68,253. 2024 estimated premium is $60,707, which is a decrease of $7,546. Any questions on the workers' comp? Okay, the next packet is the package policy, and I put a little green tab there. Just a little green tab to kind of cut through some of the fluff. And I'll just try to, there's a lot in this document, but I'll just highlight a couple of the changes. Under the general liability, we have included the bicentennial special event, scheduled for next year for the town's involvement in that. So that's been calculated into next year's premium. The property coverage on our buildings and contents, the total amount has increased to $27,34837, which is a little over a $3 million increase in value. It's a little heavier than prior years. It's about, averaged about 13% increase. But what we're seeing as an industry is the cost of materials to replace, the cost of labor. So they looked at our schedule pretty closely and increased our buildings accordingly. They did, on the property coverage, increase our deductible from $1,000 to $2,500. And when I questioned why that was done, it was a combination of, we had a property claim, June 29, '23, of $27,610. They also cited the size of our account, the property amount, coverage that we have in total. And that is a per-claim deductible, so not per-building. So we had the windstorm June 29, and we just had one deductible. Equipment breakdown, I just want to remind you, a couple of years ago, the board opted not to ensure the electric substations, I'm calling it the racing.
It's a switch station.
Switch stations for a breakdown coverage, because the premium was huge. So just a reminder, that's still not covered. If you want to readdress that, we'll be happy to do that. On the auto section, the total of 31 vehicles, which is the same vehicle count as last year. But just a reminder, we did add four new 2023 Ford Explorers and deleted four other older vehicles off of our schedule. So your number counts the same, but obviously you've got some newer vehicles. The other item on the auto, the comprehensive deductible has been 500, and the company increased that to 1,000, as it's their new minimum deductible for comprehensive. On the inland marine, we added the parking lot lights at Jackson Jack's parking lot for a value of $40,000. And we've added the clock that's going on that parking lot for $15,000. So we've accounted for those items. Failed to mention back on the property, we did increase, we added the addition of the cemetery building. We added some kind of building that's going on at Strawberry Road lift station. And we have never had the bulk water building on our schedule. So since there was an incident there this year and it's been totally rebuilt, we added it.
So is the RNC building on this yet?
Yes. It's been on there for a full year, I believe.
I thought it was, but I went to check.
Yes, yes. And the third set of documents enclosed here for your review is the complete schedule of all the buildings and contents, all the vehicles, and all what we call inland marine portable equipment, street lights, all those kinds of things. So you've got those documents in here, too. The one thing I don't have for you tonight, our cyber liability policy renewed February the 9th, and they will not release a quote to me over 60 days ahead. So I'll have to visit you at a meeting later this year or early in January to discuss the cyber liability renewal.
How much was it last, can you recall?
How much the cyber liability was? I don't think I have it with me. I'm sorry, I don't.
It wasn't good stuff.
Wasn't terrible, but.
I'm going to go up a little bit.
I think you increased the coverage limit.
Yes.
You increased the coverage limit. And I'm sorry, I just called the office, but they left over there.
I just have this idea, where we're at, you know, it's, I would expect to go up to the North American France more issues across the world. Okay, well, we'll find out here in a few months.
Okay. Sorry.
Yep.
I didn't bring that whole file with me. About three pages down from this green tab, you will get to the premium section. Our annual premium last year was $66,260. This year is $73,997. So the increase is $7,737, which is about a 12% increase. Not unhappy with that, given what we're seeing going on. The first premium they gave me was up 17%, and I asked them to go back with their, put some, something into this to help us. We're seeing home increases of 20% to 25%. Carriers are just taking rate increases like crazy with all the storms.
The cost of materials.
Yes, the cost of materials, the cost of labor. Anyway. So what we're, what we're gained on our workers' comp this year, we're kind of getting back on the package side of things. Any questions? I know I've thrown a lot at you. And there's a third section, as I said, of all the property and the vehicles attached for your review.
Yeah, this is good. I would ask if Brandy, you know,
Yes.
Look over detail and see if there's anything that you don't see that you respect. I mean, you guys, you know, all the RNCs and patients and equipment.
Yeah, I want to thank Doug and Chief McMichael. Brandy and her office are fabulous to work with and keep me advised of things. And if I need anything, they're quick to get back.
Are our fire trucks, police cars?
No fire, no fire truck.
Is that on the county?
It's under the township and the town on a combined policy for fire department. Now, the firehouse is on the town, because the town owns it.
We own that. Now, we have one fire truck still.
Yeah, yeah, we keep all the fire trucks under that policy and the liability for the fire department, and then we divvy out the premium based on the number of trucks. And apparatuses, I guess is what they call them. So that's on a separate, separate policy.
Y'all second. Yep, thanks. All in favor?
Thank you, Bush. I will arrange with Brandy to come back to discuss the cyber. Would you like to sign me documents now, or do you want?
Might as well get it done.
Okay. I'll give you an initial, and five, please. No, that's all right.
We spent Christmas.
This is the terrorism.
Trying to picture where they are.
Yeah. I don't want to miss one. I know I have to track him down. Here's another one. Where that yellow cabinet?
Just make me hear.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you to the board. See you in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
We'll wear them on.
Are you ready, Brandy?
I am. I, right now, just have my claims for 366, 832, 69.
So you want to talk about those for a second? I think I had that one, ISI thing.
Yeah, for the total amount, really. There's the last reimbursable claim to ISI on 41 lift stations for $95,669. All of the claims have been submitted to redevelopment for reimbursement on that.
No, she's, I just talked to her, she's in Savannah, that conference.
Okay. I forwarded you all the email from her, though. She's got the, all the information, redevelopment, probably even the 80%. I'll show it to you. Yep, other than that, and the, there's debt payments. Services on there. Payroll, anything else is pretty general. We do have the flood removal, if you didn't see it, from 31.
Where's it at?
It's on the bottom of page seven.
How much was it?
31.
31?
31. I need to move it to the premium. Our marks done.
Yep, yep. Chris, do it. Yep. Is there a second on that?
I do.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that. All in favor? That's actually down, I think last year it was about 25% down, but it's 71%. You know, last year, we had two twice a year. A bit.
Bill? Not here, we'll jump ahead.
All right.
We had 33 criminal investigations as of the end of November, and we had 33 last year at the same time. Had total of 309 at close of November. And in 2022, we had 402 calls for the year. 141 have been violent, potentially violent in nature, 12 of those in November. Collectively, we responded to 319 calls for service this month. Five traffic stops, or traffic crashes, I'm sorry. Zero impound, six arrests, four alarm calls in November with one being sent invoicing. I know one of those we didn't actually respond to, because had an officer on another call and wasn't able to break away from the call to that one. Another one was a fire alarm. And I'm still looking into the fourth one, is the, I don't know why that one wasn't invoiced. I'll get Brandy tomorrow and look into that in future, further. According to our ECWS, ETA system, we had 25 entries in November, one felony, six misdemeanor, 11 infractions, zero ordinance, and 17 warnings. Last year, we had 259 calls, 33 cases, nine crashes, two impounds. And our ECWS for last year had four felonies, 15 misdemeanor, six infractions, 22 warnings, and eight arrests.
Okay. So I saw you bought some ammo there. I think I talked to you before, we didn't, yeah. Lucky Gunner. How many you had to buy ammo? I don't know how much, it's like 1400 rounds. Is that just for practice?
So we're switching over to 9mm handguns next year. Now, they're being actually made right now, and then we'll get them sometime in the beginning of January. So we bought some 9mm ammo. The FBI actually examined that particular handgun and the sight system and determined that one of the ammos that we bought was the best for firing or has the best accuracy for firing. So we went ahead and bought that ammo. And then we bought the, we didn't buy the best practice ammo, because Lucky Gunner didn't carry it, but it was one of the top four. So we bought a lot of that as practice ammo, some of it is duty ammo, and there's also 300 blackout on there, too.
What were you using, that?
We're using 40. Something less than right now, so.
Thank you. Got any job, Bill?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Joe?
Well, we do have the water line that the Strawberry Road lift is in.
Got a meter?
Armed, you get all meters.
Meter?
Ready to go. So that's all complete, just wait until they show up. And then the trees at the park that need to be removed for the festival tomorrow in town, the stumps have been removed. Salted sand mixed, ready to go. Hopefully, we don't leave much of it. And Dave, I checked on the parking lot. Really, we need three posts up there. One of the lights is far enough away. If you want to go with it, we can, or I can meet you tomorrow, or whenever we're going to meet this week. You want to stop by and look in and make that decision, and.
Yep, we may tomorrow, I guess, one.
Okay. Send me a text for calling. So that's all I really have. Obviously, we got a lot more done with leads and all this and that. And today, we started patching while we have nice weather. We're forcing sidewalks later this week with the nice weather. Keep ones on if you can before it freezes. And the only thing I have for purchase is, is the lineman needs another spool of wire, underground wire. They've been having a lot of, yeah, for $3,860.
How many is that?
$1,000.
$1,000.
They've been hitting a lot underground. They got another one just south of town that's going to finish up the spool they got, and then you have another one after that, so then you can get some on hand.
I was curious. All hurts. So when they do that, do they, do they, do they ever have to splice? Do they not want to splice it?
You don't.
You don't? Okay, yeah, so you need a full run.
Yeah, when you're betting, you want to play it a full run, you don't want to have to splice. It's just a place where you go ahead and be, and then the night game. Obviously, if it runs up in the night, you splice it to get it. Then new, you want to go.
Is that a thousand, I think it's 3,000?
3,860.
That was four bucks a foot.
It actually went down last roll they bought. I think he said it went down like 30 or 40 cents a foot. But that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Trying to think of something, Doug, on this.
We've got the lights on this side fixed before the parade and everything.
Oh, it's been good.
The next day, I bet some of them left.
So we had some bulbs?
Yeah, yeah, we got bulbs in there. So they were, my friend got a lot of them. Well, that was from the string they took down, some of them got broken.
I know you've told me, but I forget these days. We boarded, we boarded the poles, right, to the lot, they're on the wood.
The parking lot?
Yeah. They are?
Yes.
We have, okay. Let's try to find some of those. Chris, come on, man.
They are, they are. We actually, we could put one up there today. The bull pattern should have been turned a quarter.
Oh, boy.
So they're not going to set right. So we called the company to see if they had a plate, and they don't. So Eddie Wilhite come and looked at them. He, there's enough metal on his stick, they're going to notch that quarter over, so it'll fit right on there. So we're going to take them in to him tomorrow, Wednesday, get a notch, and we'll get them put up. They said they're squares, so they have to be absolutely perfect. They were round. So that, that'll go there to him tomorrow, Wednesday. And we'll be getting them up as soon as we get them out. It won't take long.
All right, I could ask Brandy, I'll ask you, I'm not sure which one. The gas, we know we ordered gas for the, the worser compactor.
Yep.
That'll be a couple of weeks. Couple of weeks, so we're just a couple of weeks after that. Have you heard from Graves about installation estimation?
I did today, and I, we'll see how this works out. He asked about the concrete, the drainage of the floor, when we were going to install that. And Roger told me that that was all great, so we didn't get a price on it. So he is checking with.
Okay. And Greg is. Concrete, drain the floor.
Yeah, there has to be a drain in the floor that goes into it, and it's going to be all concrete. We started looking at the building for electric and all that, for Brent and all them. We asked Roger how much of that we need to have done. We'd have to rent a drill to go through like six inches of the concrete and all that. We don't have that kind of stuff. He said that's all on Brent. And then Graves called me today, and so we're supposed to get back with him and then talk to him.
Was Graves aware that this was all?
Well, it didn't sound like it. Yeah, I was, that's what I was afraid of, but.
Okay. Well, they do those all over the state.
Yes, so, yes. I don't think it'll be that big of an issue.
I asked a question, D, I know that, I don't know how we know where the drainage go until it was here.
It was all the prints and everything, that's why I asked Roger when we were out there. I wanted to make sure whether we had to do it or not.
How about that heater for you? He's been ordering that.
It's, it's, I believe it's heated. I think if all we.
Waiting for gas?
Yes. And if, if the machine goes into an operation before that, have a portable one that we can put in there until the gas, that never gets installed.
This is gas, it's greater gas. We need, we need a line, Brandy, heater.
I was.
I was a natural building person.
Yeah.
I thought we had one.
She got one.
You have, she got right on that. So we're going to hopefully.
Yeah, it sounds like everything's fallen place.
What about, well, I talked to Brandy about that today. We sent all the turn stations. I emailed all the information that Brandy filled out, that Brett filled out, and talked to him. Happened about two weeks ago, so I emailed him today to see if I could get a response.
But we could be worshiping compactor in our wake for Christmas. Yeah, that's exciting.
Can you get rid of that dumpster?
And so when does this thing, you actually put it into the dumpster?
Yes.
It has to compare like, kind of thing, you have to dumpster in or?
The same thing will work out. Our hyper stayed in there.
Okay.
Our hyper will bring it up to it, and it goes to the worser compactor, and it drops down into the dumpster that any trash container can wheel it out, pick it up. So we'll no longer have to have a dumpster sitting out there.
We won't be taking it out now?
We will not be taking it, well, we don't have to, we've got a dumpster there.
We're not, but the public bought one.
Oh, did they? So, so yeah, so that all then made us happen to go out there and walk through the dump and that.
Excited?
Yeah. Then we can work on getting one down.
Yeah, the next one's done, plan with you on us. So, yeah.
That's all I have?
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
You want to go over the project?
Yep, real quick, there's not a whole lot of updating, but Community CrossFit and Amber Center just sent that information to the paper, so that's going to be in the paper and taking bits on that.
Which paper you used to get to?
Well, it's going to our paper, and Roger's got it into the Crawfordville paper for the timing for today. We can go, if you want, I don't know if you want to do Tarahoe, if you want to do Green Castle. How far you want to go out?
Oh, I'd be happy.
Part now being those two.
Green Castle, Tarahoe, Danville. You know, this, I know, I call it case, what's that company that does that? It's a case, construction. They don't have a paving machine this side of the state. They're in Southern Indiana, Muncie. They just have a patching team down here. But we could try out the patching when we want to fix some of our cots. They do great work. Oh, hell, they do. But they couldn't help us with the paving there.
I would send it tomorrow to those three people. Is there anybody else that you want? Nothing to let me out? Doug, you've probably been out more than I have, but the fourth was the closure road last week, but I understand it's a little bit closed today.
No. I believe they're following now.
Okay.
And he was down looking for his signs that we picked up today. They're going to get them picked up tomorrow. Sounds like it'll be next week. We're going to get some pipe that we delivered and stuff tomorrow.
Just a reminder, the Patriotcy Grant does start January 1st, but we are within our 30 days prior to we can accept the nomination for the Patriotcy to finish the parking lot. We're kind of still waiting on a combination of maybe NDOT or IGN on our OAK drinking water grant, just want some water drainage. The lift station we were spoke about, that's probably the only, the only one updated.
What you doing there?
So that's, that's the only thing that I have. Kind of hurting anything in water, IGN or NDOT, either one on that, I think we're, I think it's moving along, but I think I'll go over the last information that I received from Roger on that as well.
So yeah, now water, well, we talked briefly, I guess, about Fountain Trust loan, went to, went to terminology, I wanted you to receive the funds.
Right.
And basically, we, we, we hopefully need to wait for, to see what IGN turns back to Roger, right?
Yeah. Well, once we close on that, they're going to want to know how quickly we'll work it first. We don't want to necessarily be personally done before we're ready.
Right.
To the more work, so.
Yeah. So that's your part. Oh. So just mob it in. Before we do it now? Want to talk about the grant?
Matter of now, but later.
Yeah, the ready grant, just a quick thing on the storm monitor board, I have something for that. Something for redevelopment meeting last week. And I, I did, I did see this email. Uh, something for redevelopment meeting last week. And I, I, I did, I did see this email that you sent out about the reimbursement for the, for the storm. Uh, that's nice. We received thirteen thousand and fourteen dollars fifty cents from the, from the state disaster relief fund. Yet we ain't gonna distribute that.
Well, I, I don't know. I flipped it. There's company email. I wanted to forward that to you all, but I appreciated credit.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Giving me that information, so we can apply for that. And we got what you was figuring, even though we submitted close to thirty thousand, I mean. So it's kind of what we were just paving or whatever.
Well, most cost in, in that, you do it.
What is your back, your back?
You get revenue, you see the back end based on the revenue, I suppose, you know, as a percent basis.
The majority of it's gonna be the electric. Well, all the, all the electric would be overtime.
What are we doing at McDonald's? Oh, we're not. Okay, okay, I'll, I'll leave that in. Well, I just had it in my notes. Storm water boards, yeah, storm water.
We, we got it. We're thinking here.
I, I, I'm thinking fish sandwich here, we're just. So yeah, we've got, uh,
Hold that on.
The storm water board's been trying to figure out what to do with their, their, uh, just, they're entering. We looked at the raids, and I thought we, why am I gonna go there? What we came up with, you know, we've had a cap, a four unit cap on commercial property. Uh, which means that would be the base is five thousand. Can I write, say something wrong, jump in, he's on the board with me. But we have a five thousand square foot. That's a one, a unit, equal equivalent unit or?
Now, yeah.
Five thousand square feet. And we had a cap of four of those on commercial property, although some commercial properties exceed that in many tons. And that's how we set that. That's how it's been, uh, since that board was created back in twenty, uh, twenty, or another, two thousand and eight.
Three years.
I think the board was created. Anyway, way back. Um, so in an effort to try to increase our revenue a little bit, basically, it's break even utility pretty much now with the debt we have. It goes back to twenty eleven, I think it paid off in twenty, paid off there real soon, next year, June. Well, we need to do something. We, we don't have cash flowing to any bank of that utility. So we voted at our last meeting on November fifteenth to, to remove the cap on years for commercial property. Be about thirty properties, in fact, where every five thou, right now, I say that, like I said, they're capped at four. So if you don't have over twenty thousand square feet, you're not gonna see any change. If you have over twenty thousand square feet, you will definitely see an increase in your, your storm water rate from above the base. We're also reviewing to, or going to have the, the, uh, property in town review to, to get, make sure we're charging the right number of equivalent units. Uh, also in our, our motion here, we have, we, uh, governmental entities will, in the medium time, incorporate this into their budgets. Cause that, that's going to impact a couple of governmental entities in town, five years. So we have twelve months to, they have twelve months to, uh, budget for that. So I suppose what we need, Brandy, is a, uh, resolution prepared based on, do you have copy of the management? So we can have that at our next meeting. And just any questions on what I did, I'm along on now. About thirty properties, I think, that's gonna be affected.
I wanna be clear that this is not affecting residential.
No, no residential property is affected. And even a lot of commercial won't be affected unless they're, they're over that twenty thousand, right down to cap to twenty thousand square feet. So, but and also in our, who actually I think Kevin did a lot of work, Kevin Brandy, we do have some commercial properties for some reason aren't on there that we're not getting charged up.
Well, just because we have maps and some of them weren't, weren't on there for whatever reason, and no rhyme or reason, but if we, uh, once we get this, we're gonna, what was it, Steve talked, Dr. Wolf talked to, we get a Google map, what they call it, and we'll identify.
We sent out a request with three different engine firms to go ahead and estimate the property sizes. I think somebody had one that responded.
Which is me, or he, what, David said, it, it doesn't affect the residential.
Right.
That's unfair.
Yeah, they're showing you about thirty, thirty pay, pay, great payers in town, effectively. So it's not.
If you had, when you had a residential property paying eighty six before, you had some, some resident property, we have commercial property of thirty thousand square feet paying fourteen. So in all fairness, we're.
We're making a terrible bulk residential, commercial property, or it's in Rockville, basically. Um, so yeah, we need a resolution for that next evening. Anybody else have any questions on that?
Review of properties, the business properties.
Yeah, the square footies is an action, yeah, property. Make sure we have the right number of equivalent units set up, yeah. Well, let's see. David and I, we were at that Humvee meeting last week, redevelopment, uh, talking about rated two point oh. You guys all heard about rated two point oh? It's, uh, it's, uh, what is it? Regional Economic Acceleration Development Initiative, that's REEBI. And this is the second, second round of this, and they had it one point oh. One point oh was pretty limited scope, is what you could, could go after funding for. This one is much broader. And where it's interesting from our point of view, uh, from the town's perspective would be, they have, uh, they have three, three areas that they're, they're funding. One is quality lot, two is quality of place, three is quality of opportunity. We would fall in under the quality of place, and Dave and I talked briefly about it, and I'm here to get into what we talked about. You know, we have a couple of ideas. Uh, we could submit infrastructure projects, and there's, there's a couple of different ones we're thinking about. That could be Jackson Board East, Stormwater Project, which really needs to be, to mark. It's one we're struggling to figure out to pay, uh, how to pay for that. Uh, we thought we could submit that. And also the East Side Square, we, we have ten foot for the West Side Square, and this time next year it'll be done. Uh, we could submit that as another project, maybe include the South Side, see what just the East Side estimated cost would be, and then we could see whether or not we're gonna throw the South Side. Off the top of my head, I'm guessing Jackson Board East, the Stewart Water included, we're looking at probably three million for both of them. Uh, and I'm guessing about one point five for each side of the square. That'd be another three million, you have both sides. That's just rough numbers. Okay, so anyway, get back to this pri, rated two point oh. The application opens twelve one, closes two twenty three. I talked to Cindy right before the meeting. Uh, they, they don't, uh, it'd be five twenty three or so, you get an idea of whether or not you're gonna do funding. It's a one to one match, so it's, it's not as good as eight to twenty, but it's, uh, it's not terrible. So I know you had three million project, we have come to one point five, and I asked her about what's timeline to complete. And she said they aren't real specific, but from date of war, you, you've got two years to be done. You know, we're just, I, just to go forward, I guess, first question, is there's questions or, or what I mean, I desire to pursue a little more and get some numbers and see what we might be able to do. Yeah, we have to get some numbers, push it out through the next three or four. Pushed out.
It, it opens in January, so we're not under the gun on that.
No, but we're not.
In all fairness, we got two park board members here, too. And there's unlimited, uh,
Opportunities.
Opportunities. I mean, you could, I mean, the park board can also jump on this. Individuals can jump on this. Like I said, the government, it's, it's a one to one, I believe. I, I think if I were for an individual that wanted to do a grant, or a private organization, that would be a two to one, and individuals would be a three to one.
Yeah.
So, um, it's a, it's a pretty good deal, too.
Dave, that's what they're for the risk. It's got two hundred and eleven thousand dollars for that ready grant. Um, I'm not sure what the MAC was. And also, they're, they're helping on, they're like Park County, that particular block.
Twenty four.
But I know there's another.
Any individual run square, they've got like twenty five or thirty thousand dollars of that, of that grant.
They do have a two year, they put a two year timeframe on our, uh, projects to be done by December twenty sixth. So, um, there's all kinds, you gotta, you gotta have, um, e-verify, you gotta have drug tested, and blah, blah, blah. There's a lot of, you just gotta jump through. But, uh, it was really a boon to us. And they, like, they really want to be in Park County. You know, whether the risk will go back after again next year, I don't know, but, uh, it's really worth your efforts, you know, those people.
Yeah, on this grant here, I, I would actually like to talk to Main Street PCI, I mean, cause it's, I mean, this, this thing is wide open, so.
Yeah, I believe there's eight counties in our region. It's a regional thing. Uh, seventy five million's been allocated for this round. And, yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be competitive, but, uh, all you can do is try. So, yeah, we'll have to get some, well, I talked to Roger on, uh, Jackson Board East and get some numbers together on the cost for that. He had detailed here what you need for this, about the exact, the summary, the proposal narrative, the budget, and all that yah yah. But, uh, East Side Square, I mean, we've got structure points, already had all the data for that, and just took that, looked at the West Side. Yeah, West Side, they already did that, and looked at the East Side, and see, okay, what, what do we think is gonna cost, maybe it's South Side. So if you guys think it's a good idea, we'll, we'll start making some contacts, see what we can find out. I don't.
Two motions.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, it's a good idea, cause it's just gonna cost money probably different. This paperwork's done, what's with it. That's all I got, dude.
Real quick, while we're talking about redevelopment, um, I just wanna say something about, real quick. Uh, when it comes to bringing businesses into town, I mean, I'd just like the folks out there to know that that would be your first place to go. I mean, as far as making a contact, you know, the town, I mean, you, you can come and talk to us, but, you know, redevelopment is, that's kind of their job. So, um, they're looking into that kind of stuff all the time, so I just wanted to put that out there, so. Mike, you got anything?
Uh, just a quick little add-on to estimating on the, uh, the water, for the bulk water. On the pre-movable cards, it's still kind of fuzzy, but the people will bring the money in to, to the office here for us to be moved. The office has to contact, and it goes through our first department, and they're the ones that take the money from the tenant, move it onto that card. I can get a number from them, uh, read directly to the business, and that will forward that to Brandy, she can talk to him. Just get, get just a little bit more information to make it more clear as to how those cards really do work.
All right, thank you. Bruce, you got anything?
I'm seriously good.
Okay, we're on top. Okay, uh, under new business, um, we've got a finding of fact from the board zoning appeals, uh, meeting on, uh, November thirtieth for proposed McDonald's location of five eleven Norton Lincoln Road. The, uh, the findings was the rezoning of the development standards will be, will not in, in what is that? In Europe.
That's legal, right, in there now? I'm not very informed.
Endured, sounds about right. Uh, to the public health, safety, morale, and general welfare community, that was a yes. Finding use and value of the area adjacent to the property, including the rezoning will not affect in a substantially adverse manner, that was also a yes. Third finding, uh, the strict application of the terms of Rockville zoning ordinance would result in a practice, practical difficulty. This situation would not be self-imposed, nor be based on perceived reduction or restriction of economic gain, and that was also a yes. So based on the findings described above, the board zoning appeals does not, or does approve this application contingent on the purchase and closing of the property from Ryan and Lisa Ford to the McDonald's USA LLC. So my question to you guys is, somebody wanna make a motion for a vote on, on acceptance, or? On favor? Looks like we may get a McDonald's in.
And we are not turning away any state houses.
We don't have any control over that.
Anything else you guys wanna add to that?
We should have some balloon yourself, this is historical.
Ice cream machine is already down for cleaning.
We have any public comment, anybody?
We've got two folks out here. I'm gonna start, I'm positive, no, to thank the town for all the help they had with the cleanup of the main street project, the planters, the lights in front of Bloomfields, uh, et cetera. That being said, that brought out the, uh, the chatter about the decorations again. And in fact, that was what, I'm not sure what the other comment related to, that I had, uh, recommended that they have a problem with how much decoration, but vis a vis Bloomingdale, whatever, to contact the town board, report a county name, so, uh, that'll do the rest on. That being said, this shift is safe this year, is that perhaps the town board and the county can work together to kind of get us back to where we were with some decorations. You know, the comparison of Bloomingdale, it's Monzuma. We're not ever gonna be Danville, I get that. But, you know, maybe put together some sort of group that would work with, you know, Main Street, PCI, like you said earlier, PCI, the town, uh, the county courthouse.
They just discussed putting lights back on the courthouse and hanging them just now.
That, that was, had come up, you know, not from the top, top, but from, uh, Mr. Meek said that, maybe from the corners up, it would be an improvement. Uh, the light bulbs were changed on those two or three strings, looks bad. Bloomfield's done a great job decorating the store. Worth, uh, asking businesses to make do a little bit more. We have that, that stuff, her window, G and M. But maybe put together some sort of, um, group with all the governmental entities to maybe get back to where, someone, where the little kid, thirty six was lying, so.
I mean, I made it very clear, I'm, I'm willing to work with anybody, so.
We, we, we did take a stab at, in Martin Street came up, and decided not to waste money on new lights, and it's no place, but we know what the power poles are gonna do. So I think that, uh, that will, once that's probably done, we'll know a bit more. But just every year comes up, you know, especially like with Bloomingdale and their, their decorations, and Dana, Parade of Lights, et cetera. And it may, before next year, find some, uh, some way to decorate the square.
I'll make a motion, we put Kevin in charge of all that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with that, though. We got beautiful plants.
Well, I'd like to continue on that, that, uh, I think Main Street did a great job on their second annual Parade of Lights.
Oh, hey.
Appreciate, I mean, everybody volunteered, I mean, every, I mean, all the, and just everybody. Uh, the kids, uh, about a hundred and twenty kids got to see Santa Claus, uh, which is a good thing, I guess. And, uh, you know, just keep up the good work.
Yeah, and to that end, too, also, just to report to you, it'd be a, uh, with the risk, the park players kind of had a deviation from the past. We had a Christmas play, like Elf, or, or Christmas story, whatever, Nancy Thomas and, and the group put together the hometown holidays with the local talent. We got over two hundred and fifty people at the three o'clock showing. We had well over a hundred and sixty people at the seven o'clock show last night. It was Jimmy's, the local talent, and, uh, the kids danced, and they had a choir, and it was just really gangbusters. We did a heck of a business that time. I don't know about that. It tastes like fix laptop to run that, I'll teach that. It was really cool.
I think he, I, I think he maybe mentioned to me in February that he was going to plan to do the off weekend.
Okay.
Because of all the work, and he didn't want somebody else to be responsible for that operation, will he work in here?
Right.
But, um, I think she could say, I don't know, the Saturday, Sunday, they could have a weekend. I know you will have that going.
And shout out to Brandy, who decorated for the pretty colored lights in the two circles on Ice Beach.
They do, let's. We're, we're, we got some more.
Here we go. That's all I got.
Thank you, and, uh, like I said, hopefully we'll do better, and, uh, we'll see what next year, Brandy.
Uh, so we, our next state ordinance violation is tomorrow, but, um, two of the three we have set tomorrow actually gonna have to be tried. So I, I talked with Phil, and we're gonna go trial, David, his officers and I will try the cases. We, we, we tried to resolve those two cases, but it's been about sixteen months now, and we're still not finished. We really felt it was gonna get resolved, so we're just gonna set it for trial, and, you know, two of the judges go to a bit. But we've done everything we can to try to get the properties cleaned up shortly, so it's like we may do a little bit on those properties. Um, we did have about five or six in the last week, a week and a half, that we've been able to dismiss that we have cleaned up the properties. I've been talking with Phil about that, and he's been good about checking on them and updating and everything. Uh, so those have been resolved, um, thankfully they all managed to do their things, uh, and, uh. Uh, we do have another one that's set. Uh, so those have been resolved, um, things without one is the right thing, and, uh, we do have another one that's set tomorrow, but the individual is in jail. Uh, he's been in jail for about eight months, so I asked for it, he said out ninety days. That's past his court date, his criminal date, so at that point, hopefully, we'll know if he's in the alley or not, but without, you know, with him being in jail, he's just going to go and sack, and, and, I probably feel like in jail, there wasn't a point, had it here, and I'll get that one. So that's kind of where we're at with the ordinance violations. We do have some other court dates set in the next couple of months, but all of it, you don't know exactly, it doesn't do it, so.
That it? That's the question. I'll ask the public comment one more time. If I got anything you want to say.
I'm just glad to visit, I've been here in one way.
Well, good seeing you, Matt.
All good. All right, thank you all.